We want to thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. The weather is supposed to get pretty creative here in a little while. Hopefully, it lets us get through this meeting safely. We're going to do something different tonight. We're not doing a normal structured workshop because I felt like that was more one-sided. It didn't give people an opportunity to speak and say what's on their mind. So we've talked about this and we decided that we're going to let DEI speak. Whoever in your group wants to speak on DEI, what it means to you, what it means to our community, what it means all around. So you have an opportunity to speak on that and you won't be interrupted. There is no time limit. We have an hour. Hopefully, we can get everybody in. I asked that everybody be considerate to each other. I asked that nobody yells at each other. This is calm, a discussion. I want it to stay that way because it makes sense because that's why we're here, right? So we'll start off the workshop tonight with whoever in your group would like to speak first and kind of go over details of DEI and what you feel the importance of it, where it's going, where you hope to see it go, all that kind of stuff. And then if council has questions at the end, they'll be able to pose those questions to you on different items that you may bring up, if that's okay. That said, we will now start the workshop and whoever's first on this, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm just off, can you all hear me? Okay, perfect. My name's Kimberly Abels. Used to be a counselor up at that dice with y'all. And I'm super pleased to be able to join you this evening to talk with you about the DEI committee. And I want to set some context and take us back to the beginning. In the summer of 2020, our nation faced a reckoning and we got hit with massive wildfires. Communities across the country were confronted with realities of this changing landscape, weren't quite sure what the path forward was going to look like. And Estacada wasn't immune to that. And when a city official posted a controversial statement online suggesting local protests were going to be shut down, it didn't silence any voices. It just made them louder. We had additionally two racial justice marches that followed, drawing not just supporters but counter protesters as well. And what stood out the most to me wasn't the tension, but the courage. At those marches, Estacada residents shared their stories, their real raw experiences of inequity in our own backyard. People stepped forward to speak about their safety concerns, fears, hopes for a better, more inclusive community, but they didn't just speak to each other or in a vacuum. They spoke to city council. They sent, they sent us emails. They came to public meetings. They gave us heartfelt testimony and that city council did what you all are doing tonight and listening. That's why on July 13th, we held a listening session. People called for real change, asking the city to commit to promoting inclusion. And then on December 26th, or excuse me, October 26th of 2020, Estacada took action and this council voted unanimously to create the DEI committee. This committee wasn't formed to divide us. It was built on, it wasn't built on the extremes of any political agenda, one way or the other. It was built on a simple, powerful belief that everyone deserves to feel like they belong. The goal was to cultivate, advance and safeguard an inclusive community where our differences are recognized, no matter the background. And our committee chose to lean heavily on the word inclusive in the charter because that's what we wanted to focus on, on making sure people felt welcome. But let's be clear, this is not about forcing anyone to do anything. It's really just about listening. It's about understanding that removing barriers for one group removes them for all of us. When we make sidewalks that are paved instead of gravel roads, it makes it more accessible for wheelchairs, but also parents with strollers and also kids who are on scooters. When we add closed captioning to city council meetings, we're not just helping the hearing impaired. We're helping anyone who wants to participate regardless of their circumstance. When we write code and discuss complicated topics, we don't, we use plain language so folks can understand, or we should. When we are soliciting feedback on important discussions in our community, we're using the same old outreach tactics. And then we get surprised when we get the same demographics back in those surveys and it's not representative of our entire community. These aren't hypothetical. These are real barriers that are excluding people from engaging in our civic process. This isn't about division. It's about unity through understanding because when we take the time to recognize someone else's lived experiences, we strengthen the entire community. It's not about slicing people into categories and intersectionalities and who identifies as, as one side or the other. It's about remembering at the end of the day, we're all people and we all want to belong. We all want to feel safe sending our kids to schools, walking in our neighborhoods and speaking to our leaders without fear. It's important to recognize that that fear and anger can often come from a very small, loud minority. And I don't believe those will be the voices that you'll see in this building tonight. This room will be filled with the people who care about Estacada and who want to see, see our town thrive and grow stronger together. When this committee was formed and passed unanimously, we heard the same arguments that I've heard for the last four years. And we still took the time to create this committee because this committee is not about political agendas. It's about people and we are all here to support the people of Estacada. And it's about listening to voices that we haven't always heard from. We've got to stop focusing on labels and identities and all of these other pieces that these fear mongering conversations of the extremes around us keep preaching at us. We have to stop fearing conversations just because they're uncomfortable. We have to stop shutting out the voices that challenge us. Otherwise, we're not listening. We're just reinforcing division. Inclusion isn't about catering to everyone's unique identity. It's about creating a space where everyone can feel heard, respected and valued regardless of what the decision or outcome is. Imagine if decision-making wasn't just for those who could make it into a council room on time. Imagine if we took that decision-making table, put it on the front lawn of city council, made it bigger and passed around the mic till everyone had a chance to be heard. That's what inclusion looks like. That's what success of this committee looks like. It's not about politics. It's about community. It's about making sure that no one is afraid of their neighbors for thinking differently. It's ensuring everyone, regardless of their background, feels like they belong here. It's not about dividing people into categories. It's about recognizing all of our commonalities and we all deserve to be heard. And I encourage anyone who hasn't to come to a DEI committee meeting, talk with one of us on the committee, find out what we're about and know what the conversations are before you come to this council and deem those conversations unnecessary. Estacada deserves to be a place where everyone has a voice. So let's keep listening and please let us keep working together.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Now I'm going to give the council opportunity to ask questions. So if there's any questions you'd like to ask about DEI, its direction, its purpose at this point, are there any questions?
Mayor, I think we had a few other folks who were going to say something.
Yeah, I'm going to let them.
Oh, okay. So that's how you want to go? Okay.
That way we get it while it's fresh instead of waiting till the very end.
Okay, now I understand.
Okay, any, any questions over here? No, yeah, well, two, and that is my understanding is like if the city does a survey or something like that, we don't get any responses. And I'm embellishing, but the, the number of people actually reaching out and wanting to participate in any kind of call for input, the, the actual number is very low. And so it ends up that we're, we're not hearing from the vast majority of people. So I'm not sure how that's exclusionary because no one's, again, I'm embellishing, but no one's participating. I can't remember some of the, the parks survey stuff in the last couple of years, but you get like 12 responses or something like that. So just making that comment.
Yeah, and can I respond? Sorry. Yes, and that's, it's, that's not exclusionary. That, and that's not, there, this doesn't have to be black and white and binary. It's the fact that, okay, we're not getting any responses, but why are we doing the same thing over and over again and expecting something different? Where are the people that we need to go meet them? When we did tabling with the Parks team and they had a paper survey out there, every single person who came up to them filled out a paper survey. So it was, oh, these, this is where we need to be. We don't need to be, it's not going to be on, on a Facebook post that gets hidden a bunch of other things to come take a survey or an email to people who are already engaged and you're already hearing from. It's those other folks. So what, how do we go meet them? And that's what this committee specializes in and hoping to try to be able to give that type of advice of, have you thought about this? Have you thought about, you know, going to churches? See where you, you know, how can we get into any kind of, there's a, we know there's a lot of people that engage at their churches. How are we, how are we using that as a resource or a megaphone for us? And all of these other ways that we could be. So it's just about bringing those additional ideas to the table. It's not accusing anyone of doing anything wrong.
What was that? Well, I do, you know, I'm not sure if it's, it's a back and forth, but, but you know, then I think you know, because in, in science, there's a thing called cohort bias where, where you're, you're going and you're, if you're going to, to, you know, interact with a, a, a smaller group and you end up getting more responses, so those responses end up being overrepresented in the overall decision-making. And then some of the things that, that like wheelchair access or that kind of stuff, that's just straight ADA. I mean, it's, it's law of the land. So again, just to comment, that's what I'm thinking with, with that kind of thing.
Can I add something? Just because it's law of the land doesn't mean that it's being considered. And that's what we're bringing to the table is, have you considered it?
Any other questions you'd like to add in at this point?
Can you guys give me five examples of things, shortfalls that you've identified in the last six months of meetings that, that the city is falling short on helping people in our community? Not discussions, but just specific things where we have shortfalls?
Sure, yeah. One, the three-hour barrier to having to give a comment on a meeting if like you're sitting online watching. You can't respond like you could if you were in person. You have to have submitted your comment three hours before the meeting started. So that can create a barrier in that space. We've also identified through the housing needs assessment, different gaps and shortfalls that came in those demographics and in those survey questions. And so by making solid recommendations that you can go back through, so the next time we do a survey, you can have those recommendations to fall on. Third, our council meeting minutes only go back to 2021. And there's a lot of really important things that happened before that on the website and they're not easy to find. And they're all, and it just doesn't keep you up to date and give you a full picture. It's also not in accordance with Oregon State Public Records Law. So there's that piece of it. That's three. What was the other one?
We can give you some more.
I can give you some more. I don't have, I didn't prepare that list off the top of my head, but there's other things we can go through the minutes and pull them up.
And, and some of them actually may come out in our comments.
Yeah.
And so I would really like us to be able to just get through our comments and, and if they could jot down questions as we are speaking so that we can all get through our, our actual presentations, then I, we'd be happy to take any, any questions if that's possible.
That's A, okay. Let's, let's just do that thing.
Okay.
Go ahead.
We'll barrel through.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor. Drink wine and council members. My name is Tammy Beatty. I am the current chair of the DEI committee. Something you may not know about me is I am a strong conservative Christian woman. I love my God, my family, my guns and my country. There are many people in this community who have similar beliefs to mine. However, there are a whole lot of other community members who do not have the same beliefs as I have and I value that. That is what makes this community diverse and beautiful. Many of those people are treasured friends of mine today. Years ago, I thought it would be fun to join a city of Estacada committee. I researched which committees I could join because I live outside the city limits and I am only allowed to apply to certain city committees. That should change, by the way. I took the initiative to apply for a committee because I care about my community. The DEI community perked my interest. I was a little hesitant though to apply because of what I understood DEI to mean. I was worried that our city might become woke with the committee being part of the city. I was not sure if any conservatives like myself were on the committee or even if the committee members would want me to join. We have become like a family over the years and they are my treasured friends today. Even though my fellow committee members and I may not agree on everything, we respect and value each other very much. All our voices should matter and be heard. I have been chairing the DEIC for two years now. In those two years, our city council has repeatedly been trying to shut down this committee. There are two other committees, oh, excuse me, there are no other committees in this city being held under such scrutiny. Our committee has been blessed by the support of our city liaison, Mads, and council liaison, Heidi. So I know that there is not an issue for actual city and council resource support. I will not list, excuse me, I'm getting lower here. I will not list all that the DEI committee has done as that is stated in the timeline you have been given tonight. I will give you a few examples though of things we have done to help better this community. We have provided feedback on plans and policies the city has brought to us. We have also had speakers present at our meetings this year, such as the Energy Trust of Oregon. We wanted our community to know about their special program for rural Clackamas County citizens to receive no cost or low-cost heating and cooling systems, water heaters and insulation for homes with inadequate insulation. The Clackamas County Drug Prevention Team presented in another meeting about the epidemic of drug overdoses in our state. We are the first city who took the initiative to partner with Clackamas County Public Health. They gave us free of charge Narcan boxes, face shields for CPR and decals for the businesses to put in their windows. We handed out over 50 boxes of Narcan free to city businesses. The city businesses were so grateful to have these boxes of Narcan. Some of them told us they had thought about buying a box, but it is expensive. Having Narcan gave them peace of mind. One business owner wept. She was so grateful to have the box. Another business owner told us someone nearly OD'd near Dollar General and they wish they would have had a box. Something I would like to see the committee lead for the city in the future would be a free dental clinic. My husband and I attended church in Sandy. We've been leading a free dental clinic every year in the city of Sandy for the past six years. This will be our seventh clinic in October. We provide free crowns, fillings, extractions and cleanings partnering with Oregon dentists, some within our own community. We provide dental services to a lot of people from the city of Estacada each year. And we've unfortunately have to turn away many as well. This is a huge need this community has. Let the DEIC provide these much-needed services for our community. If you have trouble with the committee name, let's change it. We tried to do this earlier this year, attempting to change our name to Better Together, but you would not approve that. I heard in one of your council meetings that the city needs to keep the DEI name for grant funds. I would encourage you to give our committee better guidance on what you want us to do and change our name if you so choose, but please do not get rid of this committee. I have a couple of questions for you that I'm hoping to have answered here tonight. And you can answer them later. Why are you wanting to shut down our committee? Please be honest with us. Why can we not keep the committee as it is, as it is now with a new name? As there are no staffing issues, we have solid staffing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Nicole, you're next.
I'm gonna ask you guys to bear with me. I am not a public speaker. I actually have anxiety. I have battled depression. It's one of the reasons why I joined this council. I wrote a lot of things, but I honestly just want to try to speak from my heart as much as possible. One of the things that was beating on my heart from the last meeting or the last workshop that we had was the mayor's comment that we need to be more compassionate. And so that's what I'm asking from you guys today. People need to have their voices heard. I have a daughter who has Down syndrome. There are other children here who have special needs that need to be considered. We don't want these kids to have to move away in order to get consideration. We want Estacada to lead the way, not follow after what other people are doing. There are issues with diversity and inclusion. My son is being called the N-word daily at school. My daughter came home today saying that she was called a monkey for the second time. What do we say to that? I had a meeting with superintendent carpenter, but this is not who Estacada should be. One of the things that made me feel welcome here was that when I researched Estacada, I saw that they had a diversity, equity and inclusion committee. And I said, this is a safe place for my family to be. We're going to be welcomed here. We're going to be safe here. People want us here. And so to hear people arguing about funding and grants, these are people's lives that we're talking about here. This is not something that we can just disband and sweep under the rug. We need to lead the way on saying that Estacada is a place where you can come, where you are welcome and that we will look out for you. We're supposed to be Estacada strong, so we should be protecting each other. We should be strengthening each other. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anymore?
Well, I also wrote a bunch of stuff that I left at home. I found that when I was trying to organize my thoughts for this, what I found myself doing was writing responses to statements that have been made, things that I've heard, things that I wanted to essentially, you know, create a counter argument for. So I'm going to sort of fly off the hip here. And it's really going to be hard for me to follow up these very exceptional women that I sit on this committee with. Kimberly did a good job of summarizing the sort of how the committee was founded. Uh, my wife was also a participant in those days that I think we're all trying to erase from our memory in 2020. It was traumatic on a lot of levels for all of us, I would assume. When I applied for the commission initially, it was because it had come to my attention by people's own admissions that there were negative actors trying to sabotage the efforts of the commission and they were very open about it. And I thought, well, I might as well try and counter that effort. The fact of the matter is that there were three other people who they tried to appoint before I got an email saying you got the spot. So I didn't necessarily go seeking this position actively. As most of you know, because we were all here last March, I can be perceived as a fairly controversial character. I've tried to curb that a little bit in public light. In fact, Tammy and I speak probably once or twice a week on the phone. And we have very lengthy discussions about the nuances of this issue at a national level, at a state level, the city level, on a community level. And it's complicated because it involves people's lives and their wellbeing. I have been a justice advocate my entire life. I was raised very conservatively. First time I got in trouble was on the school bus because one of my neighbors was being bullied who had a heart condition. And he was, you know, his skin was discolored because he wasn't pumping enough blood. So upon being disciplined, I also received encouragement that advocacy was important and standing up for people was important. So I have a couple of members of my own household who are not heteronormative. And I find myself advocating on their behalf first. I was also recommended today that maybe I should try and present a softer side of my personality rather than one that's so resistant and salty, essentially. So what I'm hoping to get from this is just some direct communication and honesty. Because this morning I sat down and watched your medium from the second and I listened to what was discussed. And clearly there's the function of the committee when it comes to the finances, the grants, the bureaucracy of how things work from the state and federal level. Clearly, we're all aware of the fact that things have changed on a federal level. And now that's being brought into this discussion as far as whether or not that continuation of a committee like this is relevant on the city level. I do hear you guys talk a lot about how we need to focus on Estacada. The committee did that two years ago. We made that shift. We're not here trying to, you know, have a third bathroom for people who are not binary. We're not here trying to do these kinds of things that I think are sort of associated with this larger sensationalism of what DEI is, you know? And that is being exaggerated all over the place. So what we did is we said, what's going on in Estacada? Who's underrepresented in Estacada? How can we help people have access in Estacada? And we've been trying to do that. But you know, like frankly, when it comes down to it, Mike, the only criticism that I've heard of the committee from you over the last couple of years is that there are members that are negative that have a certain reputation. So clearly, I know who that is. And I would just like a straightforward response and answer if this really falls on, you know, this negativity falls on my shoulders because you're getting feedback from your constituents who are trying to criticize me because they won't interface with me directly. They need to, whatever, you know, I've heard repeatedly that there's emails that have been received, but I haven't seen the receipts. You know, I don't want to sit here and nitpick, but what I'm saying is if I'm the problem, let's identify that, be honest with me about it and I'll submit my resignation. You know, this is work that needs to be done in this community without question for everyone. And I know that, you know, the tides have shifted a little bit and that that sort of political assertion is now trying to be made. But you know what? The reality of it is we're all better than that. We don't need to sit in here and pick teams because this is our town, everybody's town. You know, like I'm invested. I'm not going anywhere. I'm raising kids here. My kids are in the district. You know, I hear about this kind of stuff that Nicole's dealing with. My son is dealing with the same kind of stuff. The difference is he's a big, sassy, burly white kid who gets right back up and challenges that bigotry and that bullying, frankly. And I'm proud of him for doing that. And I'm not going to tell him, don't be yourself. Don't show your true self to people around you. Because the most important thing that we're trying to teach our kids is to know themselves, to be themselves, to love themselves, to respect themselves. So frankly, we already did this dance a year ago. This seems somewhat redundant. I'm not trying to discredit the amazing presentation that my co-chairs or members have done, but I just want you guys to shoot straight with us. You know, I feel like there's a fairly predeterminative You know, I feel like there's a fairly predeterminative assertion that has been made. So if you want to shift things, or if you want to change things, or if you want members to leave, or if certain people shouldn't be representative of the city on that level, please be straightforward about that.
So I'd like to get my comment out early, so everybody knows where I stand on this. Thank you, Nicole, for sharing, you know, your family's experience. I appreciate that. I'm sorry that they're going through that. I, like Mike, have a few members of my family that are not heteronormative. My, they've gone through a lot growing up here from, you know, they were born here. They've been here their whole lives and they've dealt with a lot growing up. But my family's dealt with a lot growing up. My stance is one of our council goals is community engagement and accessibility. And I believe that this committee can be that driving force towards community engagement and accessibility. And I will not ask for Mike's resignation. I believe that Mike speaks for a large member of this community or a large amount of this community. And I would, I think it would be a disservice to this community to, for him to step down. So I stand with the DEIC. I believe in what they're working towards. And again, I believe that they can be the driving force towards community engagement and accessibility, which is one of our council goals. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jerry.
I thought it was pretty clear when we spoke a year ago, Mike, about my feelings about you being on the committee. I don't believe you, you have a place on the committee. Your, the way you behave communicating in public with members from the community when you're on the DEI committee, it's supposed to be inclusive. I don't think it's inclusive. Your speech isn't inclusive, the way you communicate with people. I think, and it's not specifically you are a member of the committee that I have a problem with, that I, that I don't agree with the need for a DEI in Estacada. I think it's divisive by nature. I think you're a symptom of, of the committee. The divisiveness in your communication is common in a lot of the committees, but it's, it's not you as a member that, that I disagree with. I just think that all of the things that were mentioned by the people and the, and the things that your children are going through, I hate that they're going through that. It's, and they should have no place in Estacada. With or without a DEI committee, there should be no place for hatred, bigotry, racism. Your kids should not have to fear going to school. I have, you know, I have family members, my grandkids that have similar situations that they deal with, and they don't deserve to deal with that either. So I'm not being dismissive of, of that, the struggles that your family members are going through. And I hate that they're doing, they're going through that. Anything I could do to help with that, I'm happy to help with that. I just think that there's a place for, it's not the right words.
Well, how, how are you planning to help with that?
Bring it to our attention and see how we can address it. I'm just saying from the DEI has been, I've been here for over a couple of years. I haven't heard very many specific things come from the DEI committee, come to the council that need to be addressed, that are specific concerns in the community that you guys are dealing with. I, I've heard lots of discussions about things. You guys have had people come and speak about lots of different subjects and you're passing out Narcan, and I think that's a good thing. But I haven't heard very specific things, shortfalls where people underrepresented communities are, are, you guys are coming up with solutions and those are coming to the council. I haven't heard that over the last couple of years many times. So it doesn't seem like much work is being done.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mike, can I ask, when, when you have reports from other committees quarterly, do you ask them for five shortfalls of their committees? Cause I have been there and I have not heard you ever ask that to any of the other committees if they've had any shortfalls that they need to improve on.
I, I didn't ask about shortfalls. I just asked about solutions you guys came up with for specific problems in the community. And know the traffic and public safety committee, when they come, they're constantly bringing solutions at every council meeting. Jim Moriarty is coming and speaking about solutions that for problems that need to be addressed at, at almost every, every council meeting. We don't have that. I, I haven't had that from the DEI committee the whole time I've been here. So I, I don't need to ask him because they're coming and presenting the information.
Okay, that's not true.
So the function
Okay, hold on just a minute. Just a minute. Okay, I asked that we not get upset that we try to keep this even keel. So that's it. Go ahead, Annalee.
I think that the comparison between the two committees is not symmetrical at all. You can't say that, well, what are you doing because this is what you're doing? The thing that we've repeatedly asked the council since the inception is to be involved with planning and decision making to bring a certain lens to the awareness of the council so that certain people, groups aren't being overlooked or marginalized. Now, is that the same as being like, we need a crosswalk on fourth so that the kids walking home from school are safer? It's not the same thing.
Not so. Question, she asked me why I didn't ask the other committees that. That was just an answer.
Right.
That's why I don't need to ask the traffic and public safety committee because they're bringing that constantly to the council. I was, I was just answering her question. That's, that, I wasn't making an argument.
May I speak? I'm new to all of this. So my understanding on coming on board with the committee was that you guys were going to be giving us issues that you had and that we would be applying our lens, our expertise, our experience to it to make sure that people were being considered and things that, things weren't being missed. And for the time that I've been on the committee, it's just been a lot of bickering back and forth. And that's not what I'm here for. And I feel like I could speak for my other committee members and saying, that's not what we're here for. We are here to help you. We want to be a team. We keep saying we're Estacada strong. This makes us weak. This is not a strength.
I also think it's helpful to remember what's in our charter. Our charter has five goals. Four of those start with the word advise. Advise on things that you've identified, that you bring to us. And the last one is to recommend changes based on that advice. We have asked repeatedly for a variety of reports to be involved in, for, to have presentations on a variety of plans, and we're not getting anywhere. And I don't know what that block is. I would love to work with you on it to figure out why, why we can't be brought in and why we can't do that piece. But our, our role is not the same as other committees because you picked us as an advisory committee. We're here to advise you not to operationalize.
You know, obviously, I share condolences with you for your kids because I can be sympathetic to that and I can understand that myself, right? I think anybody sitting up here, regardless of how they feel about the, the title of a committee or what the committee is, right? I think anybody with kids in here or anybody that even doesn't have kids can rationalize with you and say that that's not right. And to be clear, nobody up here is condoning that behavior either, regardless of the decision that's made. Now, that being said, I'm a realist in the sense that is there things that I think that we could do better? Yes. Any community could say that. But you guys asked for transparency and you asked for honesty. So I'm going to just speak directly, okay? Without emotion, okay? I'm going to do my best. I'm a passionate person, so work with me, all right? I think that you as a core and what you're trying to do for this community is pure. I think that what you're trying to do in your ideology behind it and your, and what the intent is, is right. That you want to do well. You want people to be represented. You want people to feel heard and included. I don't think anybody up here is going to disagree that we understand that that's what your intent is. Now, this is where I have to be direct. Now, we can chase the receipts, quite frankly. And we can understand that when it comes to DEIC and other things like this, right? But specifically, we're talking about this, okay? That there is funding involved in that that came from a certain entity. And it was listed as social engineering and propaganda. So quite frankly, irregard
By who?
Irregardless. By who?
I'm
By the federal government.
Sight your
Yes, USAID.
Listed as propaganda by USAID?
Yeah, and social engineering, quite frankly, but
Oh, so DEI was listed.
No, not DEI, but where your money went to and the causes related to it, okay? Racial division specifically is related in that to take down strongly.
Are you, I have a question. Are you speaking on a national level or on a local?
Can I, can I talk without being interrupted? You guys asked me for my opinion.
Now stop, okay? I said that we would let everybody speak, so let's let him speak. Be fair, please.
I just didn't know if the eye contact was intentional. That was my question.
I don't, I don't
Sorry.
I'm trying this direction because you guys are on the Sorry.
Finish your question.
Yes, so to me, it's plain and simple. I think it's divisive at its core. The people that created it, I think that it was evil and its intent. I don't think that that lands on you as individuals. That's where I'm trying to be clear with this. But I think the identity and where it comes from is pure rotten. I really do. I truly believe that. I don't think it has a place here. That being said, I think this community does a really good job with trying to be understanding. And they do a really good job at coming together. And if you guys want to come up here and continue to bring stuff to us, there's nothing saying that you can't do that. I would like you to name one thing that you do that you need the power of the city behind you. There's nothing saying you can't have a community group and call it whatever you want and advocate for the very same things that you're doing. Okay, so what we're doing is we are not taking away your rights or your abilities to do anything. That's not our intent here. We're simply having a conversation about what we feel about this specific entity and what it represents and what it means to our community through our lens. And through your lens, right? This is the idea of the workshop is to hear you. And I haven't interrupted any of you, right? I feel like I've done a really good job at that. Okay, so thank you for letting me finish. But that's, you guys wanted a direct answer, that's where I'm at.
Jerry, you had something?
Yeah, I just, I just, just a clarification question. So Jonathan, on your, your concerns, were those concerns based on a national, the national level, the state level, or, or our city level? That's, that's just for clarification because I believe that what our diversity, equity, and inclusion committee does is not what you're seeing on a national level or even a state level. I don't think that they're, the, the, you know, that, that what they're doing are the same things that everybody's concerned with on a national and a state level. So I just want clarification on that.
Yeah, I think that regardless of what you're doing, where it came from is one and the same. I think from federal to state to community, okay? It's one big thing that was moved, one big idea that was moved and passed along the entire country. And now it's one big thing that they're asking to be removed across the entire country. And also talking about pulling funding and other things related to there. So if we want to be clear, it does relate all the way down to the community level, Jerry. And I'm kind of surprised that you don't piece that together.
Oh, I was just asking for clarification, but that's all.
A question.
Yeah.
That was a pretty big generalization. We're a big country. And so my question is, how do you say that it's rotten from where it came from? Many things can be rotten based on where they come from and become something beautiful. What we're doing here in Estacada is something beautiful. So I don't see why we have to follow what other people are doing. Why can't we do our own thing? That's the beauty of living in any state in our country is that you can go and find a place that lines up with where you want to be. It's the reason why my husband and I left Texas because it was getting really out of control for us as a black family, as a special needs family. And in some instances, even as a, you know, a family who have individuals who identify as non-heterosexual. So I, I really would like to understand why, why does it have to be all or nothing?
Can I just add like a philosophical point here to your representation of that issue? This, this would be similar to saying that, you know, the crusades were committed and enacted in the name of Christ. And now I'm vilifying you as a believer because you believe in Christ. And those things are somehow related. You know what I mean? Like you're, like you, like she said, you're casting a really big net. So like when it serves to like talk about the federal endeavor, then that's what we're focusing on. But when it serves to focus on the city of Estacada, then that's what we're using. It just feels like double speak in a lot of ways. And, you know, I mean,
I have a question though.
Go ahead.
When the Crusaders, in the reference to the Crusaders, when, when that occurred, did the federal government force it on all the states and their communities initially? When that, when it was rolled out? I mean, because you're comparing an orange to an apple. You're saying the Crusades, something that happened
No, I'm saying like, if you're a believer of Christ, there have been atrocities that have been committed in the name of Christ. And if you're a believer in Christ, then I can just generalize that those atrocities also fall on you somehow. And that's clearly not the case. You know what I mean?
Okay, so I'm going to continue on here, but your question was given, John.
So in an earlier meeting this year though, I made a comment, something along the lines of, you know, DEI has been out there a long time now. And so now there's results. And so I'm a when in doubt, count kind of guy. I mean, I've got a personal opinion. But for the, the purposes of this workshop, I went in with both eyes open and started digging stuff up. And so and as we know, this, this, this conversation about whether or not a DEI committee should exist here or there or in a company or whatever, has been going on now for, for, you know, over a year. I, I don't know when they first started this. Well, here it was a year, but it's been going on for some time. It's not new. So a couple of things, and I'm going to start with money. But understand me completely. I don't think for one instant that anyone in this room or anyone in this city or town is, is interested in DEI because of the money. I'm going to tie it by when I, I don't think, let me word it right. The way you guys responded makes me think I said something wrong. I don't think the proponents of DEI in this room are in it for the money. Is that a fair statement?
Just That was part of the discussion you guys had on the second that was specifically outlined by Peter, that it does have an impact
I didn't say that.
It is about the money.
I didn't say that. I asked, I, I stated, and then I'm just
No one, none of the volunteers
I just stated that I didn't think you guys were, were supporting it for the money. So that being said, we've seen within the last couple of weeks that there are literally billions of dollars going towards DEI, going to, going to federal agencies, going to other countries, going down to the states. There are, you know, now it's, it's maybe billions, tens of billions. If they ended up doing some kind of forensic audit, going back to when DEI programs started, I think in 2011 or something like that, you know, whatever the date was. You know, it could be hundreds of billions of dollars, perhaps even more than that. So there's a ton of money involved. And there are some people, not in this city, but there are some people where it is all about the money. And so switching then away from the money over to the efficacy. Honestly, I, I can't believe that, that what she said happens. I know it does, but it's unbelievable to me that it does.
You can't believe it?
Well, it's, it's By that is, it's a naivety. I think that
Keep it down, please, in the audience.
I, I would think that people are better than that. It's, I don't understand people like that that respond like that. Obviously, they do. And so just making that statement, but, but going back to the efficacy of, of these programs. And because it's been enough time, there's been enough data. Most of the data that you can find is going to be in some kind of either psychology journal, some kind of psychology magazine, something like that. And so I started looking and one of the first things I found is, and it was in the journal Nature, that over half of psychology studies fail reproducibility tests. And actually, if you, if you get into the meat of the, of the study, what that means is the actual number is about 60% of the, the studies they're using, you can't reproduce. Now, on the scientific method, you know, you get a hypothesis, you develop an experiment, you do your experiment. And, and then you need to be able to repeat the experiment in order for it to be valid. And so if you can't repeat the experiment and if you're interested in science, you go back to the drawing board.
And if you're interested in science, you go back to the drawing board. But if you're not interested in your science, but you are interested in the money. Then you grab that result and run. And so that's I found a a ton of that. Um. Poor science building on itself. Um, and I I personally think that that's why you've seen the collapse of DEI across the country so quickly. Because it's based on bad data. Um, and you ultimately have to measure results. That's what it's for. And so. In it. Continuing and looking at some of these things. It's, have you ever? Have you ever read a sentence? Where you understand every single word in the sentence and you have no idea. What the what the paragraph says, none whatsoever. And so I'll give you an example. Um, when cues exist in the environment. In the environment that seem to confirm this possibility. Underrepresented group members come to experience social identity threat. Defined as a concern about being devalued based on one's group membership. Social identity threat in turn typically leads underrepresented group members and women to question whether they belong. To the context inducing this sense of threat. Uh, scholarship on social identity threat has therefore highlighted the importance of identifying and addressing cues that induce threat. And so I read that. And it's these these studies are full of that kind of stuff and it builds this this Gordian knot. That it's that you can't, you can't make sense of. And so if you pull an Alexander and and cut the knot and get to the basics, what do you find? You find that DEI, um. It, it increases costs. DEI reduces uh productivity. It increases dissatisfaction.
Can you say?
It's not, um, it's not doing what we were hoping that it would. And so in today's environment, when. When there are explicit. Um, direction from the feds where you can't have DEI. Um. That fact with the the fact that it it doesn't seem to support itself. It seems like it's an easy decision to to eliminate it.
Well. Okay.
I'm not touching now.
May I, may I just a quick question?
One quick question, because we gotta have a little time.
What do you propose the alternative is? Because I heard you guys discussing breaking us up and somebody go to this one and advising. So you still want our advice. You just don't want us as a committee. So then, what what is the point when we could just be a committee? I'm confused on. Why you don't want us because you listed out a bunch of stuff. But yet you guys said that you wanted to do, what is it called? An ad hoc committee?
Yeah, yeah.
What is the point in that? If it doesn't work, if it's not valuable to you, then what do you need it for at all? Other than the discussion about, well, then we could still be able to get funding. Because me, my skin, I'm not for funding. People's mental health disorders, we're not for funding. That was very condescending and I don't appreciate it.
So, okay. No. Um, I I've given enough ample time for both. I mean, do you want to speak on this, Matthew, before we move on really quick or? Because we gotta have a few minutes.
It hasn't been brought up. And this is what the community thinks, okay? I mean federally, statewide, in our society right now. One hundred percent, they believe that DEI is a push for the LGBT QIA plus agenda. Okay, that's what they believe it is. Okay, it hasn't been addressed. It hasn't brought up. Okay, there are things going on at the junior high, at the high school, on the kids' level. Okay, that isn't being taken care of. Straight kids are being taken. Anyways, that hasn't been brought up and that needs to be addressed because that's what the community is worried about.
Straight kids are what?
They're being. Well, I know of one where there's a straight girl who has been followed into the bathroom multiple times by a girl who is not straight. Okay, and that's harassment and wrong. If they're trying to push their beliefs, right? And when she does not.
Well, we're gonna go into city council and there's gonna be an opportunity for. For, I didn't, you want to?
I just want to talk about the the pureness that you speak of, the intentions of this committee. Um, it has nothing to do with federal, has nothing to do with uh. The dollars for Estacada. Um, our city council has prioritized communication and outreach, yet eliminating this committee goes against those very goals. If this committee didn't exist, wouldn't we create one to strengthen local connections and ensure all voices are heard? Estacada's DEI committee isn't a national political issue. It's a local effort. Built for our community by our community. It focuses on strengthening Estacada, supporting our neighbors and making sure every resident feels welcome and valued. Removing it is shortsighted, disrespects hardworking volunteers and weakens our commitment to community engagement. This isn't about division or politics. It's about preserving what makes Estacada strong. Neighbors looking out for one another and ensuring everyone has a seat at the table. That's why the committee even voted to rename itself to Better Together. Because unity and connection should always be our priority. Removing this committee weakens trust between citizens and leadership. Supporting it reinforces what we all believe in, strong families, strong values and a strong community. Good governance is about listening, not shutting people out. I urge you to make a decision based on firsthand understanding of what this committee does in Estacada. Attend their meetings, see their work, and I expect you will recognize their impact. This is a moment to stand up for local solutions, not outside narratives. Keep this committee and keep Estacada strong.
Okay, now I've got about five minutes for the city council, so we're going to end this session. And then I want everybody in the audience to know that there's a community comment section right here at the beginning. And I'd like you to put in an application to to speak on that so that you all get a chance to be heard. Um, and make sure that Sadie gets that and she'll make sure that I get that during the city council meeting. So I appreciate everyone who came out tonight for this meeting. And I I hope we gave you enough time to express. So that you feel represented, because that's what my intent was. So I thank you. And we will go into the city council meeting in about five minutes, so in this.